To the Delta County Board of County Commissioners meeting for January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Absent today is County Administrator LaBalle. Do we have any additions to the agenda?
I have nothing.
The agenda will stand as presented. We're going to move into constituent time now. Delta County welcomes everybody participating in County Commissioners meetings. If you're here to talk about the land use code, there is no new updates since the last Board of County Commissioners meeting. I would ask that you, if you have something to say about it, make it brief. We've got nothing new really to discuss here. All waiting on the planning commission to finish their work. So first up would be Nico Wolf. Is that microphone on? Okay, thank you.
My name is Nico Wolf, four one five one three, New Rock Road. And I should be at work right now, but I am here to speak about the land use code one more time. January third, we had about fifty people here, fifty constituents came into this room. And the planning commission meeting of January eleventh, we saw close to two hundred. Though I do not take responsibility for the words other people say, I do wish to apologize on behalf of those who spoke rudely and made it a bigger issue than it should have been. But I do feel the anger that they feel and also feel a passion and deep care they have for this area and their families and their farms. And I wish to channel that energy into polite and productive dialogue. Several residents and I compiled an eleven-page document. It was a list of a number of specific issues that we had compiled of the code, issues with the code along with specific solutions. And I sent it to both Mr. Supas and the Planning Department before Wednesday's meeting. It was neither complete nor was it without error, but we have been trying to absorb, decipher, and comprehend this very large document in a very short period of time. I did receive confirmation receipt. But the only items in the document that were addressed at that planning commission meeting were issues that had been previously brought up. And with only three minutes each to speak and so many people in attendance, it was impossible to actually present and go through the whole list of specifics. Specifics that were provided in writing and had been requested by Commissioner Supas the previous week. So the matter at hand though is that the public does care about this document. And having just learned about it, we need not have had the time to read it. Wednesday evening, many people spoke passionately about it and what this means to them. And I think there were more people that at one meeting and had participated in total in all the planning public hearings on that update with the past year. So the tiny print notices in the back of the newspaper have not been sufficient to be a manner sufficient to notify the public of the time place and nature of the public hearing. And I also spoke with people that participated in the land use or the master plan. And they were not aware that the land use code had been going on. So I would imagine that people that participated would have been on a list to be directly notified of updates. But my point is that the public is finally becoming aware of this and we do want to contribute. So I'm here to ask you to give us some time to do that. And please, I know this is a lot to ask, but we ask you to table this for one year so that the community can come together and really contribute to this code that has intended to last for decades. As it's currently offered, we don't want it, but we do want to work with you to create something that is acceptable to the people of Delta County. A year is asking a lot, but if we do ninety days, we're in the spring planting season, six months is the heart of farming season. A year puts us back in winter when people have time to really see what happened. Now, there is a lot of good stuff in here about regulating intensive development. We need regulation to high-impact activities, but we don't need the same level of regulation on small rural residential lives. And we don't need the heavy-handed threats of punishment for simple violations. And ultimately, the three of you are responsible for this document, for this code. And I don't think that you really understand the magnitude of it and how it affects us. Both you and the planning commissions have spoken how spoke of misperceptions and misunderstandings on the part of the public. But no one seems to know what the word permitted really even means. And the reasoning behind the word keeps changing depending on who is talking. And additionally, none of you answered yes a few weeks ago, and I asked you to read the whole code. But the people are reading it now, we're studying it, and we don't like what we see. You know, this is too much regulation, it's full of regulations to try to fix problems that don't exist. The twenty twenty code is not perfect. But it does need fixing, and this is supposed to fix the first one, but in some ways it makes it worse. Twenty twenty-one says you're allowed by right, twenty twenty-two says no you're not. Twenty twenty-one even says P means allowed with a zoning permit. And twenty twenty-two says P permitted with a zoning permit. Yet no one has been able to explain what a zoning permit is either. And we would like to go back to the beginning of that twenty twenty-one code. The planning commission admitted Wednesday evening that much of this code was imported from somewhere else. And no one is able to actually define where that somewhere else was. I mean, Delta County must have a land use code. I think it must be written here entirely. Now, Mr. Home has done a great job of threading mysterious documents out of the darkness and finding old ordinances that no one knew existed or scarcely implemented and not enforced. He's done a great job of putting the pieces together, organizing so much information and filling every hole he can find. And I have great respect for his experience and expertise, but right now, I think the focus should go turn more to the actual community than to the code itself. And we can give you many specific examples of issues that we're seeing in the code along with specific solutions, and we did do that. But there are more issues and we need more time for real community involvement. In addition to asking you to table this for a year, I propose another idea for your consideration. If we could plead this code in the two parts. The one part, we turn to the focus of the regulation for specific development because that is necessary and this code does address many of the issues encountered in that regulation. And in so doing, we remove private individuals, private families and private homes from this code, from this book of punishment, as it seems to many of us. And as it is, this code lumps everything together and it's going to a point of changing a complaint-based system to one of actively seeking out violations. And a change that I may note, I did not see in the summary of changes posted on the website. And in addition to this commercial development code, maybe we can have another book for rural residential lives, which is not necessarily a code book, not rules to be violated and punished, but more guidelines with perhaps basic rules included such as don't dump raw sewage on the ground, know your boundaries, know where your property ends and your neighbors begins. And the rest of the rules of the code, we could translate those into guidelines that encourage personal responsibility and encourage hard-working people to free lives and have affordable housing on often low incomes. So the punishment part of this book is a lot.
Mr. Wolf, I'm going to need you to summarize here.
Okay. Well, there are many issues. So the end of this day is, yeah. You three are responsible for signing the paper and what this code does. And people will hold you accountable for what the consequences are of that. And I understand there is a January thirty-first public hearing on this at ten o'clock. Is that correct, sir?
That's what I'm aware of.
Okay, well, it was posted on your Facebook page, I understand. Spoke of the January twenty-fifth planning commission meeting, says it's a public hearing on January thirty-first at ten o'clock. Yes.
I have nothing.
And there's on your agenda, the minutes page, there is a, it says regular board meeting on January thirty-first, and the calendar page is not there.
That's a placeholder.
Just list some meetings. There's no, there's no planning commission agenda at all.
It says ten AM public hearing on your website, on your Facebook, government Facebook page.
Yes.
We're checking.
I'm looking on Facebook. It is, it's just a placeholder. I can guarantee you the land use code will not be discussed at that time. We won't be ready.
Okay, is there another public hearing planned for the land use code in front of Board of County Commissioners?
After the planning commission finishes their work, and that may take several weeks to a month or more.
Okay.
They've got a lot to do. We've remanded it to the planning commission because for some of the very reasons you spoke about, but also this is a living document. So it does undergo updates and changes, you know, on a regular basis.
Yes, I understand. Okay.
Nothing on the thirty-first.
Okay, thank you. Well, we look forward to finding out when things do happen.
So do we. Thank you for your time. Evelina Baisham?
Could you pass this back?
I would like to take some time and find the document that you posted on your Facebook page. That looks very official. It's actually public notice.
Please introduce yourself.
Evelina Baida. I live in Crawford, four four five one six, New Rock Road. So I don't have it right now, but this was posted on your government page, so I would like to, I would like to present that to you in a second. I have that on my laptop. But I wanted to speak to you specifically about the lack of trust and the trust that is being eroded right now as we speak through this process. And if you were there at the planning commission meeting last Tuesday, sorry, last Wednesday, you would have seen a lot of, a lot of that trust being eroded and being expressed, the erosion being expressed. And this is because we don't feel like we're being heard. And also, we feel like a lot of the, a lot of the notices were unseen. Another reason for this is because we're getting a lot of different misrepresentation of the codes and passing of the buck. So during the presentation by Carl Home, there was a zoning plan statute slide that quoted Colorado revised statute thirty dash twenty-eight dash one eleven. And I can give this to you. This is a photograph of that slide because you were not there. You were not present at that meeting.
We're not allowed to be. We can't go to those meetings.
Okay. Well, I don't know if you were given the presentation. Then I will give it to somebody who would like to take a look at it, or you can just hear it, hear me say it. So the zoning plan was quoted, actually, the Colorado revised statute of the zoning plan or regarding the zoning plan said that planning commission slash Board of County Commissioners shall make a zoning plan. Shall. I know you work for the government, so you know what shall means. It means that you have to. Well, we looked it up. The Colorado revised statute thirty dash twenty-eight dash one eleven regarding the county zoning plan says the county planning commission of any county may, may make a zoning plan for zoning all or any part of unincorporated territory within such county. You could say that's a blatant lie, say that it must. There is a little statement here. And upon order by the Board of County Commissioner in any county having a county planning commission, shall make a plan. So there is a shall in there, but only if you, three of you, three of you men tell it to do it. So I just want to reiterate what Nico said. You are accountable. You are the one who are making that decision that we need to make a master plan and we need to make a zoning plan.
Correct. Move on.
The reason is, any responsibilities, any liabilities that come from it, you can't recuse yourself from it. You can't put a paragraph in the zoning plan or in a code and say that you are not liable, which you are doing right now in this code. You added that in this new revision. You cannot say that. You are liable. You are the one who are making it happen. In order to possibly repair that lack of trust and erosion of trust, give us time. Give us time to look at this and let's work on this collaboratively. You are actually, you were not allowed to give input because of lack of notices or very poor noticing. You need to give us time, and like Nico said, I am starting my seeds already for my farm. I will not have a lot of time to do it. And if I do have time, that means I'm neglecting all my other duties. And I don't know where you get your food, gentlemen. But I hope you support local agriculture and I hope you get it from here. And that might mean you might not be able to eat. If we come here and give you input within the next three months or however time you decide to give us, we need a year. Because next winter, we're going to be able to dive into it even more than we are doing it right now. So please consider this.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to present the, your own document that you have been putting on your government Facebook page.
Okay, we pulled the document, but.
You pulled the document? When did you do that?
Well, we just found it.
Oh, you found it. Okay, you didn't remove it. Oh, you said pull it. I mean.
Somebody just, somebody just sent it to us.
Okay, great. Okay, great.
But we don't know where it came from.
It was on your government Facebook page. That's where I found it.
Excuse me. It came from the DCI. I pulled that. That was a screenshot ad from the DCI. And I do believe it was posted on the Facebook page.
Joanne, I saw that there was a share from the government page.
Okay, okay, okay.
I would like to get into that.
This is Miss Evelina.
Because that's, that's what we're talking about. There's a lot of misinformation. There's a lot of misunderstandings because of the way you're communicating with us.
Okay, thank you for bringing that to attention. We will address it. Marley Nierberger, you question mark whether you'd like to speak about?
Okay, Marley Nierberger, four one four four seven, Landmark Mesa Road. I am not that involved politically and considering that the whole world's falling apart and controlling everybody, I thought it's time I stepped up and at least learn what's going on. So I'm here as a learning experience and two concerns. I'm concerned about the outside influences on our communities in Peonya. There's, I live just outside Peonya. There's so many outside influences and grant money that's just taking over. One example is the recent bread and puppet show in the park in Peonya. They're radical political organization from Vermont. It takes pride that they have existed continuously since they started their war protests in the sixties. And, and they are organized and know what they're doing and know how to suck people in. And I could go on and on about the grant money that's coming in from influential moneybags that are good for Peonya, are good for Delta County, are good for our youth. I'm especially concerned about our youth and future generations and where our country is going. I would like to make a comment. Meeting the other night that Nico addressed, I was impressed. The committee kept everything in control and I was concerned about the angry attitude of the citizens. I was glad I came late and was stood by the door and I noticed there are at least two police officers there facing the door. And I was glad that I could make a quick exit. It's pandemonium, whoa. And they are continuing to meet in Peonya as a citizen's group addressing the issue. The other thing is, one of the outside influences is, I think you're having a work session with them coming up in this year. It's called something like Concerned Citizens for a Healthy Community. And they're involved in the green energy type thing. And I've been trying to learn what I can about it. And I'm curious how that work session will go and how much participation the citizen can be, be there. And I guess I'm here just to learn and see what's happening and find out what's going on further. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And understand that the county does not overstep and get involved in municipal affairs in Peonya.
Well, I understand that very much. It's such a pervasive attitude in happening that it's, I'm just concerned about our youth and I think it's a worldwide issue, whether it's Peonya or the county or the world.
Thank you. Stephen Reed.
My name is Stephen Reed. I live at two four eight Fourth Street, Hodgins, Colorado. Couple of questions. Who's? We're talking about the, this code. Who's the director or who is responsible for formulating this code?
Okay, Steve, you know how this works. This is constituent time. You give us our.
Well, I'm trying to get some information. Yeah, so this, who, who is the man that, that is?
The Board of County Commissioners is ultimately responsible for that.
Who did y'all hire to?
Okay, the planning director.
And his name is?
Carl Home.
And he is from where prior to this place?
Well, he lives in Cedar Ridge, New York.
No, no.
Okay, Steve, Steve.
No, did he come, I understand, did he come from California?
He did.
And?
Okay, now, if you've got, if you've got some credible input here.
These are fundamental issues that I can address during the time.
If you've got some real data here, instead of just showing a bias against somebody.
I am not.
Well, listen to it.
This is, he's came from California. How long was he in California doing his job? Who is, are you here? Is he here or is he somewhere else? Okay. How long was he out there? Three months?
Okay, Steve, please get to your point.
I'm asking a question. I have a right.
This is not a dialogue.
It is very important that the people know.
It is not a dialogue, Steve.
Yes, I'm asking questions that I have a right for, Wendell. Correct.
If you'd like to set up an appointment with Mr. Home.
I want, I want this public. How long was he out in California?
I have no idea.
You don't know?
I do not know how long Mr. Home lived in California.
Okay.
Okay, I do not show bias in that regard.
You're sidestepping it. Yes, you do know. Did you hire him? Did you interview him?
He was interviewed for the jobs.
Where were you guys part of?
Yes.
So you do know how long he was out there?
What's your points, Steve?
No, you are not answering an honest question. How long was he out there?
He just answered you.
No, you do know.
I do not.
You had his resume. You sat down and visited with him. You knew that he came from California. You did not ask him how long you performed your position in California. That's a lie.
That's two years ago. Okay, moving on, Steve.
That is a lie. Now, the thing of it is, is basically, you've got somebody, why did you hire somebody from California in the first place? With numerous years, I heard thirty years. So he retired. Why was he looking? But why did you hire somebody from California? You know him. When all three of you have stood up in front of the Delta County Republicans saying, I'm for small government. But yet, every single issue that is on this new code is going about taking away craft industries, home businesses or whatnot, and permitting that stuff out of existence. You guys have all stood in front of me saying, oh, we need smaller government, and yet you are doing this. My point of it is, is you planted tomato seed, you're going to get a tomato plant. You hire somebody from California, you're going to get the same. You hire somebody from California, you're going to get the same kind of regulations that he spent thirty years doing. Here, my question is, is if you're willing to offer, why did you hire somebody knowing that he had those kinds of tendencies in the first place? Are you looking to, are you looking to gentrify the county? I don't, or it says, why did you stand up in front of the Delta County Republicans saying that I'm a good Republican and vote for me? But yet now with all the information's coming out, so people didn't know. You're putting stuff in that people don't like, you're not having a question for it, but you guys hired him.
Thank you for your time today. Adam Pittman. Welcome.
My name is Adam Pittman, I live at one two four nine six thirty seven ninety Road in Peonia. And I appreciate you giving me the time here to speak to you folks. I just, I want to first off say that I am in favor of zoning, I'm in favor of the twenty twenty one plan, even though it came from, from nothing. I think it's a great idea and largely a good document that's acceptable to most folks, myself included. And it came after the master plan and a lot of community input, and it's a pretty cohesive document that was, from what I understand, widely accepted in the community. And I, the revisions that have come, like, from what I understand, talking to folks that did attend the planning meetings over this nine months since it was accepted. I, I was told and from what I understand, there was like between one and five people, there's not a lot of people knew about it. And I think even in the report to you folks, they said that there was not a lot of community input given on that particular revisions. And so I'm just basically requesting that you consider listening to what Nico said and giving us a year to, like, for the community to actually get involved and come up with documents that everybody feels good about before voting on it. And that's it. Thank you so much, I really appreciate your time, and yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room like to speak? Harry, now, is anybody online? Somebody online? Okay. We'll go ahead and close the, uh, constituent time and turn it over to County Clerk Terry Stevenson.
Morning Commissioners, I have the minutes for the January third regular Board of County Commissioner meeting. Are there any corrections, deletions, or changes?
I have none.
Look good.
I also have the minutes for the January tenth, twenty twenty three Board of County Commissioner special meeting. Are there any additions, changes, or deletions?
Anything on those, Tom?
Nope, I didn't see anything.
Thank you, Terry. Very good, thank you, Terry, we'll move into the Commissioner business, first order of business for us this morning is Board's consideration of the Highway Users Tax Fund, C dot, Tim, I'm going to take that, you?
Good morning Commissioners. For forty today for consideration and signature is the certification for mileage for the H U T F fund. Beginning in October, I started assessments on District Three roads and completed them in December. There are seven hundred and thirty, seven thirty eight point one oh one total H U T F eligible streets in Delta County. In my inspection of District Three, I found that fifty-nine percent of those are in fair condition. Thirty-eight percent are in, in good condition and only three percent are in poor condition. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll, I'm here to answer, but this is for your signature. Serifying mileage.
Any substantial changes from previous year?
No.
Okay. Mike, any questions?
I'll move that the Board approve and sign the Highway Users Tax Fund report for the Colorado Department of Transportation.
I second that.
All favor, I?
Aye.
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 Do you have a copy?
Nope, hoping you're bringing it, thank you.
Seventeen, thank you.
I have a second one.
Hey, no, I cut it just in time.
Terry, do you want the original?
Next, we have a presentation of the semi annual report from Delta County Treasurer, Lisa Boy.
Good morning.
Morning.
I was going to present the semi annual report that's statutory required twice a year. I did send a third page with your document, just to highlight, there were nine, nine funds that were identified that had differing beginning balances versus the publication of the six thirty twenty-two report ending balances. Those are on your first page. If I can go through all the fund numbers, if you'd like me to, the basis of that is, normally we do not backdate correcting entries. There were two payroll correcting entries that were backdated after the semi annual report was posted. So those nine funds were affected by those backdated entries, but they've all been accounted for, so there is, if there's any questions regarding those entries.
They were backdated to?
The entries were received after the publication of the June report, and then they were backdated past June thirtieth. So they affected those ending balances, therefore the beginning balances on the report I'm presenting today, they differ. And that little summary shows you those differences and explains why they're different.
Any questions, Commissioners?
I, I have no questions, I always, always appreciate this report, it's always amazing when you, when you look at all the little districts we have within this county, it's, it's, it's always kind of fun to look at, look at how many different, different spots our, our tax money go to, so, I thank you.
Yes, thank you for doing this. I'm glad you like your job.
I love my job.
Lot of numbers to be reconciled and I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, and just to highlight on page two, we are showing some very small penny negatives on the road bridge half shares, and that was due to an S O T posting, and that should clear and take care of itself as funds start coming in for the new year.
S O T.
Tax dollars that come through motor V. And we received some of those from the state, and we were posting them to road bridge half shares, and they should be going.
It wasn't for my benefit, it was for everybody.
So again, those pennies, those pennies will go away, the only other negative reflected on this report is Endura for eighteen dollars and forty-two cents. And that was created based on an abatement that takes place in the assessor's office that makes a change in bill, bill taxes. And again, that will be collected as we start collecting our taxes for this year.
Do we need to vote?
Yeah, we all, I'll make a motion that the Board accepts the semi annual report presented by the Delta County Treasurer.
I second that.
All favor of accepting this semi annual report?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Lisa, thank you.
Thank you very much. You too.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Board's consideration, possible signature on a B L M right of way for Youngs Peak in Crawford.
Morning, Chris.
So hopefully this is the final process in the Youngs Peak communication site, you know, we put in, started this process back in twenty nineteen with Youngs Peak up in Crawford Seahill to build a new communication site up there, back then we had to put in for a communication site lease agreement with the Bureau of Land Management in order to build the tower up there, because the state wanted us to have everything under our lease and be responsible for everything. Since that time, since you built the tower, we turned the tower and the communication shelter which the state built because per state regulations and law, they had to hold the lease in their name in order to build the permanent shelter for the communication tower up there. So since we had two identical leases fully under the state, had the lease with all the equipment on it, and we had lease with all the equipment, so B L M's trying to clean that up. And they want to modify our lease that's existing to be a right of way to just have the thousand gallon propane tank which fuels the emergency generator for the building, which is our responsibility per state law. Since we received the funding through this hospital. And then the access road to the site on top of Youngs Peak. Since we have a road bridge permit that can maintain that and state, I don't, the communications network does not have that capability, so the document in your packet is, and turning down, very reviewed this as well, just to modify from a lease to a right of way for just a propane tank and the road and stable to maintain everything else on their communications.
No, the only thing I would just, just make a record of, Chris and I spoke a little bit about the rental payment, this is a standard, standard language that includes the possibility of a rental, obviously the county's not interested in entering, entering into a rental lease. The federal regulations specifically exempt local government from that, so what we understand based on the last communication is, well, this is the standard language, but they, they will follow up with another letter clarifying that there's no lease, that there's no rental payment, there's no rental payment now on the current lease we have now, so I just, I I just wanted to kind of make some record of that, of the understanding is that the B L M will follow up with some sort of documentation indicating that there's no lease payment due because we're a local government.
Any other questions for Chris on this?
As usual, Chris, nice, short document, thank you.
I didn't write this one. This is all B L M.
Who maintains the road?
When we need to, District Three, remember, this goes up and does it, they've had to go up there a couple times before construction and during construction, so that one. Hopefully going forward will just be a once a year thing of that.
Thank you.
Are all the towers that were under construction complete? I know, public TV had an issue.
They're still working, Rock Mountain PBS is working with Striker State Services, which is a private company. They build cell towers, and I believe they've gotten approval from B L M to build a new multi-use tower that'll be sold and move Rock Mountain PBS onto that, so we don't have to, Rock Mountain PBS trying to build another tower in our building, and there's limited access and space on that building, site as you know, so. I haven't heard from Striker in a few months, but last I heard from them, I believe they had gotten preliminary approval and they're working through the process that we did. So it's a one to year process of B L M doing things up there, so. There could be another tower being constructed this year, and that's just.
Very good, thank you. What's the will of the Board here?
I move that we approve and sign the Bureau of Land Management right of way for the Youngs Peak communication site in Crawford.
Second. All favor, I?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyway, he's passing around these signature pages, if you guys like to come on up. Grab some chairs. Good to see you. How are you guys this morning?
Good morning, yeah, it's a holiday, it's a three day holiday weekend, so you always wonder, right, is this going to be the Monday, Tuesday ever? How are things going to go?
Actually, John's term's still the best, it's a super Monday.
At the conclusion of their report, I didn't want to hold them up, we'll get back to the work session stuff. Go ahead, Amy.
Okay, good morning, Happy New Year. So that's exciting, let's hope we've got twenty twenty-three on all our documents. We will start with financials with Mr. Warren. How are you? I was gonna say, I'll probably be twenty-two.
Looks standard to me.
The first income statement, we're should be at about ninety percent as of the end of November.
Is there anything standing out here that you need to call our attention to?
On the income statement?
Yeah.
Other than child welfare, it's the expenditures. That's a regular. I mean, those are probably our largest standouts. I don't anticipate that to change. You know, the final sheet, the long colored sheet. November. Increased slightly, but I think that was due to loan from energy systems. That's actually happened, I think the first payroll ran for November, which was a hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and seventy-one. So those were energy payments that went out to individuals that applied.
Say that number again.
A hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and seventy-one.
Just for Delta County.
And that's the first month, so.
So a person has to come to your office and apply for assistance?
They don't have to, they can pick up an application at our office, you can apply online through peak, you can also apply over the phone. And it's, they're actually doing heating expenses and then on water, they have additional funding for water bills that they're helping individuals with, if you qualify for LEAP, then you qualify for the water.
LEAP used to be housed in our building, and it, several years ago it changed to where we now contract with Goodwill, I think it is. It does LEAP, but we have a representative in the office, so Tatiana will assist people with getting verifications, completing their applications, things like that, so we have kind of an outreach, outreach funded position, I think it was like twenty-five thousand dollars for the year.
That was new for this year, they normally don't have that outreach in the office other than the front desk. Yeah, but they did, great, that's some additional funding for that outreach. So you have an appointment to lock in. I think the reason for that was because a lot of people, they would send out notices that they are missing, they were missing verifications or the application lacked a signature. And so she's there to kind of help people do that, collect the information that's needed and then send it to.
So I know a couple of weeks ago, we sent out information to the public regarding the ending of the public health emergency order, and now in the news, it talked about that being pushed out?
Yes.
Until April now, is that still applied for what? Until April now. Is that still applied for what you guys are doing or is that separate?
Well, so the ending of the public health emergency, they passed, federal legislation was passed in January, early January, I think, that decoupled the SNAP benefits to the public health emergency. So you can still declare the public health emergency and have that declared, but that emergency max allotment is going to end. So their last payment will be in February. So we have flyers that have gone out to schools. It's now in the school newsletters. It went out to parents. We've run articles in, or ad in DCI and or just the High Country Shopper, right? High Country Shopper, which we were able to get funding for. And then we've just been distributing and handing out packets of flyers to agencies to distribute to the community as a whole. But it will end, their last payment will be in February.
But I, I think I'd seen it come out on Facebook and then, then right after that, the they published that the Biden administration moved that to April. I thought, oh, that'd be just about right after we advertised to everybody and then they changed it. So.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's now separate.
Okay, thank you.
I have none.
I have none.
Hold on.
Yeah, very good.
He's not gonna let that go far.
Been there, done that.
So the next thing I want to talk about was that same thing. And basically, that max allotment will be ending. We're trying to message the public as much as possible that they will go through a redetermination phase, which will take into account receiving new verifications and then processing their SNAP benefits as with the intended eligibility criteria that the state has. So there will be a change. We're anticipating, I think they said what, a forty percent increase in calls to the state as well as to the counties. They've sent out another toolkit with messaging. So we're going to be working on changing technicians' voicemails to ensure that there's state-approved messaging on them to direct them to services. We'll be providing also a resource guide at the front desk and have those in all the interview rooms and on the screens in the rooms. And then we will also work with Lindsay to put out as much information. And it's on the website as well. And then we've worked with some on Facebook and things like that to start messaging people. So there'll be a lot of work that we'll be doing with messaging. Along with that, so for December, we are expecting that large increase to come in because the P EBT benefits. That is an additional one million, hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars that we'll see in December's. And I'm hearing that that may not change, but that may stay regardless of the max allotment. So we'll see. I don't know if that's gonna become kind of adopted as a normal P EBT benefit. So we'll see. So then the next piece is the business plan we submitted for approval of an adult protection caseworker. Currently, we have a lead caseworker and then a caseworker and then a case aid. The, we really struggled to figure out why our caseloads continue to be as large as they are. We contacted the state and said, can you, you know, take a snapshot in time and say, is there anything that we're assigning? Maybe we don't need to be or shouldn't be, just to ensure that, you know, we're complying by the program's intention and they got back to us and said, yes, you are. So all the cases that you have open are cases that you should have opened and that you should be open on. Which means each caseworker is operating at twenty-plus cases throughout the last year, when the average should be ten to fifteen. So at this point, we are asking that the case aid position be eliminated and turned into a caseworker position. We have received a waiver for the current case aid to apply to be a caseworker. So there's some eligibility criteria with regards to education. And several years ago, they waived those even before COVID. They waived that for an educational requirement. So we submitted a business plan. Lori works through the numbers and with the allocations, how would we make that work? And so part of it is, it wouldn't be, it would be easier if we had an allocation that was fully funded in adult protection and it's traditionally underfunded. So we're looking at moving Haley's position into the county admin allocation to free up money in the adult protection allocation to cover this position. Does that make sense? Yeah, so you know, if we were to adapt, you know, the case aid role to a full caseworker role and keep Haley in under child welfare, adult protection, a little bit of county admin, we would go over our allocation in adult protection significantly. So we had to kind of move around. Lori worked with Leona on the state to figure out how to make that happen so that it didn't have a significant impact on the budget. But we are hoping that in the long run, the adult protection allocation will increase with the workload study that we just did. But we're not sure if that's interest. So we're hopeful for that. So at this point, we'd be asking for you as a board to approve the business plan for us to transition the case aid position to a caseworker position.
Questions for any of us?
A couple, a couple of comments. I mean, I don't, you guys are probably aware of this, but at the last census, Delta County had the highest per capita of citizens over eighty years old in the state of Colorado. So that, that population, we've, we've known for a long time that we had a, a large population over eighty in the aging population. So I'm not surprised that we have that extra need. And, and also, you know, when, when inflation hits like it has, the people on fixed incomes are the ones that get hit the hardest. And, you know, the given the current state of the economy and the direction, direction we're headed, I don't see that getting any better anytime soon. So I, I think this is, I think this is a smart plan and, and kudos for, for trying to think outside the box here to get it done. So.
Yeah, the, the other piece that I think is having a dramatic effect is the availability of placements into nursing facilities. So there is a lot, a lot of individuals that are still receiving services in their homes. And those services may not always be available as well. So that, I mean, I think that has also.
All you gotta do is look at the, the amount of people that pull in there at the horizons, their, their daytime care center they have. Look at the amount of people in there on a daily basis. Tells, tells you the need out there. And, and these are people that aren't necessarily qualified or aren't even necessarily looking for that full-time placement, but it's, it's a big.
May I ask for clarification? The largest in Delta County of the elderly is that percent or numbers?
No, I, per capita in the state of Colorado, Delta County had the largest population over eighty years old.
Thank you.
Mike, any questions?
No questions. Just like to thank Annie and Haley and the crew. I had a constituent Friday evening about four, four thirty that had some issues and and wanted to see if they were valid issues and Annie called me back and messaged me back and Haley called and filled me in on that. And I appreciate at the beginning of a three-day weekend, people were still there Friday doing their job and I appreciated it. And the people involved, I think, appreciated it after they understood that. Thank you for you and your staff being there.
So what is the total? Will there be an impact to your budget?
So the.
With the moving around.
There shouldn't be. We should be able to cover Haley's position under that new code under county admin. At times, if we, in the past, where we've gotten close to our adult protection allocation, we've gotten close to going over, we had moved, we had moved the case aid position sometimes into county admin just to help cover that. And there was an increase in the county admin allocation this past year. So we believe that we'll be able to remain in budget without that change. That's the work that Lori did to.
Okay, I want to clarify that. Any other? What would you guys like on this one?
All moved that the board approved the business plan presented by Human Services for the additional caseworker.
I second that.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good luck and keep up the good work, guys.
Yes, thank you.
Other than that, I'm not sure if you had any other questions from our notes. And if Michelle, you had wanted to talk about your transition with the, the business plan with the RFP.
Sure. So I've released the RFP the very end of the year. So I've been furiously trying to read through it and mark what, like where they want all my responses. But I've been working on that. I'll be submitting a letter of inquiry next week. But I think that we're still gonna move forward and, you know, we, we have all of our HCVS waivers that we have right now. And then the hopes is that if we're aware of this and everything kind of works out, that we will begin doing all of the waivers, the HCVS waivers for folks that have intellectual developmental disabilities. So we're, and this is something that's new for me. So it's a lot of learning, but it's interesting and it's giving me real busy. So. And we'll be working with Brad Lewis also. He agreed to, since he has seen many RFPs in his career, he's gonna help assist us. And I have spoken to him once because I had a couple of questions and he was very helpful. I was like, anything you need. So he was great. So.
New challenges and opportunities.
Yes. So that's, that's it that we had to present today. So happy New Year.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Um, so commissioners, we're gonna go back to four point four on the agenda, board's discussion regarding work sessions. It's come to my attention that sometimes people would like to zoom in on our work sessions and have them recorded. I, I'm, I'm really not in favor of that. I think a work session is an opportunity for people, not only ourselves or, or staff here at the county, but outside groups to come in and speak candidly with us and have some real open and frank discussion about and then good ideas and bad ideas floated out there as we evaluate them. But I wanted to bring it to you guys and see what you thought.
Well, historically, our work sessions have not been zoomed.
You know, part of, part of that, I mean, that was historically, that was a bit of a logistics challenge, you know, because we have a lot of work sessions in here where, where we don't have, you know, Lindsay to, you know, get everything started. Because if, if you're gonna have work sessions on Zoom, it needs to be consistent and concise. I mean, I you know, any work session we have is a public meeting. Anybody can show up, they put their camera up, their voice recorder up, and they can record it at any time. I, and I, I don't think, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with it. It's an open public meeting. That's, that's you know, the way the law's written. You know, the, the biggest part of it, it was, it was a logistics challenge. Just because of, you know, the, look at, look at what happened when, when we tried to set up all the twenty twenty-three meetings on Zoom, Zoom politely deleted all our twenty-two meetings. So, you know, it's not always easy just to to, to throw together a Zoom meeting. So I, I personally, I mean, I got, I got no problem. You know, should we decide to go that route? I got no problem with it. Once again, it's a public meeting. It's the law. But I also you know, logistically, it, it may not always be the easiest to accomplish.
So it'd be my recommendation to this board to continue to encourage the public to attend work sessions in person and not have the electronic communication out there for that.
I agree.
Nice one. Clarify that. Thank you. Again, the public is more than welcome, but I'd like to encourage free and open dialogue at these work sessions. Well, on our agenda, we have county attorney at nine thirty. We've got a couple of minutes. I'm gonna do the jail report real quick. This is the jail report for Monday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Male inmates, county jail forty-nine. Female inmates, county jail five. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, five. Female inmates, Department of Corrections, two, for a total sixty-one. Average daily inmate population for the week of January nine through January sixteen was seventy point seven two. That's a lot. County Attorney Bear, we've got about, what, two minutes? So we'll take a quick break. We'll come back in two minutes. So we're back in session. This is nine thirty, ready for the county attorney report.
I agree. Wonderful. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. I have one item for the board's consideration or discussion this morning, and that is under executive session. That is discussion regarding purchase of real property pursuant to our revised statute twenty-four, six, four, two, four, A. The discussion this morning, the agenda item is discussion regarding potential purchase of real estate for accounting purposes in the Delta area. I'll remind everyone present to restrict their conversation during the executive session only that topic. This is the type of topic that the official recording stays, stays on. Likely unless the chair or someone has something different that we, I think you would adjourn after.
Good plan to adjourn following executive.
All right, I'll move that the board go into executive session regarding the discussion of purchase of real property covered under section twenty-four dash six dash four, two, sub four, sub A of the Colorado revised statutes. Present in the executive session will be Lindsay Mitchell, Terry Stevenson, three commissioners, John Bear, and the board will adjourn immediately following the executive session.
You're having an executive session now and I need to leave?
Yes, ma'am.
So then I'm finished for today or?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. I mean, I mean, this is a public place. You can hang out all day if you want, but I, I, I wouldn't, you know, I, I think you probably have better things to do with your time. So.
Okay, so you're finished with your agenda except for the executives?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yep, we'll be, yep, we'll be, we'll be back, we'll be back.
Nice to meet you.
Next two weeks, so.